All right. Well, box is six. There we go. All right. I'll call this meeting to order. Welcome to the regular Tuesday. Well, it's Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. Regular meeting of the Troutdale City Council. Welcome all. And we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'll ask Counselor One to lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can the please call a roll?
Counselor One. Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Davidson.
Here.
Counselor Leeny.
Yes.
I'm here.
Counselor Andrews.
Here.
Counselor Allen.
Here.
Counselor One.
Present.
Mayor Rittma.
Here.
You, Mike, is there an agenda update?
I have two. The latest agenda was updated yesterday to include the proclamation for the 250th anniversary of the United States Postal Office. And then the other one that I'd like the council to potentially consider is combining 8.1 with 7.1 and would update kind of the same discussion that we had yesterday at our PSWAG group with the IGA.
I think we should sit down. Let's take them up together. Do the update and then move to the rest of the question. Unless there's objection. All right. Moving on, we'll go to the consent agenda. The one that's your item.
Public comments.
Oh, I forgot about public comment. Geez. Yes, number two, public comment. Okay, this is the time for public comment. Public comment on non-agenda and consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comments should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of interest or related to matters which may or could come before the council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with the consent of the council. The council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comments. So I'll open it up to public comment at this time. Let's see if, let's start with participants on Zoom. Any public comment at this time from people on Zoom?
Mayor Rittma, Paul Wilcox, Troutdale.
Oh, yes, Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, we almost got out of order there. Okay, I've got a prepared statement ready to go. Since November is traditionally an election month, I'd like to request that council consider holding a work session on how council vacancies are filled. In both 2022 and 2024, November general election results created a council vacancy. In 2022, a non-resident was elected to council, creating a vacancy due to their ineligibility to take office. In 2024, a midterm councillor was elected mayor, creating a vacancy for their council seat. Both cases, applications were solicited from both candidates and non-candates alike. While there were candidate applicants, non-candidate applicants were selected by council to fill both vacancies. The voters will have had non-elected councillors from 2023 through 2026. In the case of an election-created vacancy, the voters have already expressed an order of preference who they want representing them. It's also worth noting that the city charter does not allow an appointed mayor, but rather the vacancy must be filled by election. Of course, the council president was served as interim mayor until an election is certification, resulting in a period of time when there would be a six-member council. As a side note, Troutdale hasn't had a citizen-driven charter review committee since 1994, more than 30 years ago. Past two would be a gross understatement, and there have been very few amendments or updates to the 94 charter since then. Last November, Gresham passed Measure 26255 by 73%, eliminating the supermajority requirement for charter amendments, making it easier to pass future amendments. Expect that several recommendations from their charter review committee will be on the ballot next year. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else on Zoom wish to address the council at public comment? All right, I'll turn to the chamber here. Anyone care to address the council during public comment at this time? Yes, please, come forward. Yes, come forward, sit here and state your name and the city where you live.
Hello, my name is Tracy Clays. I live on Jackson Park Road. Been a travel resident for 35 years, and I just wanted to express my concern. Last week or so, I've seen a lot more homeless people in Troutdale, some standing on the corner with signs, panhandling, some sleeping on the north side of the street in the doorways, and one plugged in in front of Plant Pantry on the utility pool with his boombox out there and his food on the sidewalk. And I just want to make sure that somebody's looking at that. I work for the city of Portland. I like when I come to Troutdale because it is not the city of Portland. I do not want Troutdale to become the city of Portland. So just hope that's being looked at, and assuming other people have noticed that as well. So just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. If they haven't seen it, I go through Troutdale multiple times every day. And this last week, it's been quite bad. One gentleman yelling, I'm just walking through with my daughter, yelling profanities and obviously not stable. I just, you know, something to happen. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council during public comment? All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 3.1, Consent Agenda, and that's you, Counselor One.
Consent Agenda 3.1 Minutes, October 14th, 2025, City Council Regular Meeting.
Do I have a motion? The motion of Consent Agenda. Moved and seconded. Kendra, please call a roll. Chelsea.
Chelsea, thank you. Counselor One.
Yes.
Mayor Rittma.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Davidson.
Yes.
Counselor Leeny.
Yes.
Counselor Andrews.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Move on to 4.1, which is a proclamation marking the 250th anniversary of the United States Postal Office. Whereas 2025 is the year of the 250th anniversary of the creation of the United States Postal Office, the predecessor of the modern postal service, one year earlier than the founding of the country itself, later enshrined in the U.S. Constitution. And whereas the postal service has played a significant role in the historical development of the country from the establishment of roads, railways, and airlines, and a vital part of the fabric binding together the people of the country. And whereas the Universal Service Obligation, USO, in current law, which enables the population to receive equal and affordable services, no matter who we are or where we live, is a democratic right of the people. And whereas the U.S. Postal Service serves 169 billion addresses six and sometimes seven days a week. And whereas the USPS does not receive taxpayer money, but rather runs on its own revenue created by postage and postal products. And whereas due to its public mission, postal service is a low-cost anchor of the $1.3 trillion mailing and package industry, which supports 7 million jobs across the country. And whereas the postal service is an important source of good, union, living wage jobs with fair hiring practices and equal pay for workers from all walks of life, and is one of the largest employers of veterans. And whereas any effort to privatize the USPS in whole or in part would undermine the very public mission of the postal service, the universal service mandate, and the dedicated work of hundreds of thousands of public servants. And whereas while communication habits are always changing, the USPS remains a vital source of communications, the exchange of ideas, financial transactions, private and secure correspondence, mail-order medications, mail-in voting, e-commerce packages, and a host of opportunities for new and unexpected services. And whereas the United States Postal Service is owned by the people and is a wonderful national treasure, encapsulating the best of government of, by, and for the people. Now therefore, we have resolved that on this 18th day of November 2025, the City Council of Troutdale, Oregon, goes on record in support of the public mission of the USPS contained in the 1970 Postal Reorganization Act, which says, "The United States Postal Service shall be operated as a basic and fundamental service provided to the people by the government of the United States, authorized by the Constitution, created by act of Congress and supported by the people. The postal service shall have as its basic function the obligation to bind the nation together and be it further resolved that this body appreciates the role of the U.S. Postal Service on its 250th anniversary, salutes the hard-working postal workers from all walks of life who serve the people and business community, and supports a robust and thriving public postal service for generations to come." Dated this 18th day of November 2025, by me, David Rittma, Mayor of Troutdale. And I'm seconded in admiration of the postal service. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 5.1, An Update from the City of Gresham Youth Services Departments, East Multnomah Outreach Prevention and Intervention Services, E-M-O-P-I. Please come forward.
Good evening.
Evening.
Are we all ready?
Yes, please identify yourselves and move on.
My name is Marcel Frazier.
My name is Iman Gassami.
He's only donated on that. It's fine online.
Ty is in you.
Can you go next slide, please? So this is our table of contents. We'll go over what E-M-O-P-I is about, our goals and approach, who we work with, and then we'll open up a quick Q and A. Next slide, please. So about E-M-O-P-I. E-M-O-P-I stands for the East Multnomah Outreach Prevention and Intervention Program. It is a state legislature-sponsored program that was created in response to a 300% region-wide increase in gun violence that took place from the years 2019 to 2022. E-M-O-P-I is evidence-based informed practices and looks to create access and opportunities for the youth and young people in our communities. State investments allow groups to address root causes of youth violence in East County. Next slide, please. As you can see here, this is our service area. It includes Fairview, Wood Village, Troutdale, Gresham, not pictured as unincorporated Multnomah County, as well as our community of Corvus. Next slide, please.
So I'm here to talk about our goals and approach. So it's kind of broken down into three areas. Preventing and reducing violence, enhancing community safety, and supporting youth development. I know that we spoke about this last year when we came up to the council. And really what we're here today is just to kind of give you an update of what we've been able to do over the last year and where the programs at right now. Regarding preventing and reducing violence, we focus on early intervention, identifying youth who show warning signs, early warning signs like truancy, sudden behavior changes, or any association with high-risk peers. Our partners build trusted relationships and provide support before these situations escalate. Regarding enhancing community safety, we strengthen our coordination between city departments, municipalities, law enforcement, and really everybody is aligned regarding prevention. We use data, community feedback to direct resources where violence is most concentrated. And we have outreach workers that maintain a visible positive presence in neighborhoods to help reduce tension and to build trust. And then regarding supporting youth development, our program creates pathways for youth through mentorship, recreation, internships, and leadership opportunities. We focus on giving youth belonging, structure, and positive adult connections. Our goal is very simple. Help young people stay engaged, supported, and on track towards success. Next slide, please. So who we work with. So our program is a model focused on three core areas. Intensive case management, which youth who are the highest need of support, wraparound services, which surround youth and families with the support they need to be stable and successful, and pro-social activities, which engages youth in positive and structured experiences that build their confidence and with healthy connections. My colleague here will talk more about intensive case management and the organizations and the programming support and supported here in a couple minutes. Regarding wraparound services, we have organization like Latino Network, which focuses on family outreach, education, and support services to strengthen community stability. Reclaiming Futures, which is a new organization to E-M-O-P-I, which links justice-involved youth to treatment, mentoring, and life planning. And we have New Avenues for Youth, which offers housing, job training, and life skills support for at-risk youth. Regarding our pro-social partners, we have We Belong PDX, which builds youth leadership through peer mentoring and youth-led community events. Esoga, which is esports and online gaming to teach teamwork discipline and healthy lifestyles. And Day One Tech, which provides hands-on tech and STEM education to prepare our youth for future careers. And we also have direct partnerships with MESD, Reynolds, Gresham Barlow, and Centennial School Districts, where we do outreach and we get direct referrals from them. And we have indirect partnerships with Parkrose and David Douglas to provide support and prevention resources. Next slide, please.
Iman mentioned two of our ICM partners. Those two partners are called Gia and Gone Home Two. They provide services for community members at the highest statistical risk of gun violence. Services include life coaching, behavior modification, men's and women's groups, resource assistance, and many other vital needs. Intensive case managers are expected to connect with clients for up to 18 months while they're on a caseload. Our community partnerships are key to our gun violence reduction strategy known as Ceasefires. We're the smallest region in the nation running this type of gun violence reduction strategy. The National Institute of Criminal Justice Reform is our technical assistance provider for our strategy. And our law enforcement partners at the table include the Multnomah County Sheriff's Office, the Multnomah County District Attorney's Office, the Multnomah County Juvenile Justice Division, the Multnomah County Parole and Probation Office, Gresham Police, City of Gresham, Portland Police, City of Portland, and the Oregon Youth Authority. As you can see in this picture, this is just an example of what that physical table literally looks like on a biweekly basis. You'll have all those partners together sharing real-time information. These partners come together on a biweekly basis for a shooting review, where we go over every single violent event or shooting event in East Multnomah County, including Troutdale, until knowledge and data is shared in real time, making sure we don't miss out on any of the violent events that happen in our community. This meeting is then immediately followed up by a coordination meeting that involves our community and school partners that Iman just mentioned. At this meeting, we talked about community members in need of immediate services, experience at risk of violence, and how best to keep our community safe. Since March 2025, since we had our first ceasefire meeting, we have referred 75 high-risk individuals to our intensive case manager partners for services. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Marcel. So additionally, what we work with, we have a Rising Stars program, which recognizes youth and uplifts outstanding youth across East County K through 12 for their leadership, resilience, and community impact. As for the Northwest, we are the only city that's continually recognized youth here in East County on a monthly basis through the school year for the last year and a half. And then we also have out-of-state partnerships. So our E-M-O-P-I program has partnered with national violence prevention organizations to exchange ideas and best practices in community safety and youth engagement. As you can see in the picture on the right, we were able to take four youth, three of them who go to Reynolds High School, two of them who live in Troutdale, actually, to Washington, DC, for them to learn about best practices and youth engagement and all that. And they met with this organization called Hoops Sagrado. And so they connect U.S. and Guatemalan youth through basketball and cultural exchange. So it was definitely a very big moment for these youth to have that opportunity. Next slide, please. And like I mentioned earlier, we were here last year at this time, and I want to go over some of the things that we've been able to do over the last year here for the community. As I mentioned here, we had the DC League of Cities event, where we sent four local youth, three of them who were from Reynolds, who had never been on an airplane before. And so for them to go across country, to go Washington, DC for leadership and civic engagement experiences, where they were able to meet Senators Wyden, Merkley, and Congresswoman Dexter as well. So it was definitely a very big moment for these youth. For the third year in a row, we've done National Youth Violence Prevention Week, which is held at the end of April, which is this year, we did a basketball tournament and CrossFit event with police, fire, and elected officials promoting unity and peace. We held our first-ever mental health fair in June, which promoted health and wellness during Men's Health Awareness Month. We had Schools Out for Summer and Rock the Block, which was beginning and end of summer respectively, which was a family-centered event fostering positive community collaboration. And finally, as I mentioned, we have a partnership with the school district. We were able to have a summer partnership with Gresham Barlow, Centennial, and Reynolds. And for example, with Reynolds, we funded a pilot program where we had over 40 youth get paid internships, and they were able to work inside the schools and throughout different departments and to help to beautify the school and take ownership with that. So that was a really great opportunity for these kids. And of course, they were able to make some money out of it as well. Next slide, please.
Looking ahead, our plan is pretty simple. We hope to continue to reduce youth violence, ensure that young people in our communities thrive, continue to strengthen our partnerships in East County, especially our law enforcement partnerships. It was really difficult to convene everyone on the table, but we're really excited to get them at the table and keep them at the table. And then continue our advocacy for funding down in Salem, also at the federal level, at the county level, and at the local city council. Next slide, please.
And thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for having us today. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much. We're open for any questions that anybody might have.
Question. Are you funded by the county?
No, through the state.
Through the state, yes, sir. See, okay, all right.
We did put in a funding request through the county, and then last minute, there was an amendment removed us. So far, just stay funded.
Well, I guess it sounds great. Carry on, and thank you.
And we're here for...
Say what you guys are doing.
Yeah, anything that you all need, especially to help out the great youth out here, please let us know, and we'll...
All right.
Thank you very much. Have a safe holiday. Thank you.
All right. Well, let's move on to Agenda Item 6.1, Council Deliberation Second Reading, Ordinance to Adopt Updated Town Center Overlay on the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Maps. Comprehensive Plan Text Amendments. Erica.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. At our last council meeting, I gave a presentation on the proposed amendments that are in your package. I have not received any additional public testimony as of today. I really don't have a presentation. If you have any questions, I'm here to provide answers.
All right, well, I'll first announce that we did have a public hearing at the first reading, which was our last council meeting. And I consulted the highest authorities on this and my own feelings about it, and decided that I am going to open this. We are considering adopting these ordinances or this ordinance that will change the Town Center Overlay Comp Plan, zoning map, and Comp Plan Text Amendments. We're considering that tonight. And in keeping with our tradition, I'm going to invite public comment if there is any. We did have an actual public hearing at the last meeting, but I want to make sure we hear everything before we vote. So I'll first address the people participating on Zoom. Does anyone wish to address the council on this matter? Anyone on Zoom?
Mayor Rittma, Paul Wilcox, Troutdale.
Paul?
I would just support the practice of continuing to invite public comment at both the first and second hearing. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Paul. Anyone in the council chambers wish to address the council on this matter? All right. This is an ordinance, and the matter is before us.
I did have one question.
Yes.
Just go ahead. I just, I saw the staff report. It's talking about budgeting impacts, and it said there would be current and future budgeting impacts. Very last.
Budget. I put an X next to the not applicable.
Okay. I got it. I missed the X. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, well, the matter is before us. I invite the motion.
I'm going to try this.
Carol.
So I make a motion to adopt the updated Town Center Overlay of the Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Maps and the Comprehensive Plan Text Amendments.
All right, if there's no further discussion, Kendra, please call a roll.
Counselor One.
Yes.
Mayor Rittma.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Davidson.
Yes.
Counselor Leeny.
Yes.
Counselor Andrews.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
All right, thank you. And we'll move on to... Well, I'm thinking the way to handle this, 7.1 and 8.1, if we're combining them. This is, we're considering a resolution approving a five-year extension of our Fire and Emergency Medical Services IGA with Gresham. But we held a meeting last night of the Public Safety Services Delivery Board. At least one counselor asked that we, the council, hear the results of that, whatever update you were planning to give us, Mike, before we vote on the Gresham IGA.
So the update basically is upon the Fire Source Task Force and what we were able to accomplish at the November Fire Task Force. So the first thing we did is we set up the ground rules for the committee, the task force committee. The second thing we did is do a division of expenses should the task force take on any additional studies. One such study was to ask Tiberia Solutions, who has done all of the initial tax expenses for the three cities, as well as Gresham four cities thus far. So they already have a good base on what the taxes and what the compression and everything would look like with the district. So the first part is to understand what our baseline is. So in our meeting, we talked about how we could determine what a fire district baseline would look like at the $2. baseline would look like at the $2.85 per thousand, which would be District 10, the $2.92 per thousand, which was District 1, the $3.73 per thousand, which is currently what is estimated out of the Gresham model, and then the $4.00, and I thought it was $4.69 per thousand, but I could be wrong on that, which they consider their gold star option, which is their enhancements, their fire enhancements, which would include two additional fire stations, one in South Gresham area, and then one on the north side over near us, near Wood Village. And so today, we had a meeting with Tiberia Solutions and the city managers to discuss that with them and get the scope of work started for them, which we expect them to then present to us at the next Fire District Task Force, which is scheduled for December 10th at 5:00 PM. So that summarizes kind of what was discussed at the task force. Other elements that were discussed at the task force is how we break down the options and what option is the right option for our communities based on what budget number we think the citizens are willing to spend for a fire service. So that could modify the model. It could just be fire service. It could be fire and EMS. It could be a slimmed down version of one or the other. It could be the gold standard, which the gold star standard. But ultimately, the objective is to get eight and one-third fire stations for our general financial contribution, which we estimate at anywhere from $35 to $40 million is the range that we're looking for there, to get the eight and one-third stations that we need in order to keep our response times within the gold standard. So there were some questions brought up by many other members of the council or the committee. Those were taken under consideration, advisement, and are still on the table. But the first meeting was essentially just to set the ground rules for the task force. So many of those things were then discussed last night at our Public Safety Working Group, and we kind of dove into some of the more nuanced items within that. How does the fire district break down financially? How, what kind of administrative costs are associated with it? What's the financial impact to Troutdale residents? What are our response times? What are the costs for services? How are we going to be able to figure those out? Those were all questions that came up at last night's PSWAG meeting, and maybe our PSWAG members can chime in a little bit and fill the gaps that I might be missing. But I think that summarizes most of our conversation and just understanding that we're at the very cusp of this whole process and understanding that it's going to take Gresham time to sort through all these numbers, to come up with what they believe will be the most viable solution. And at the end of the day, hopefully, the numbers speak for us and our course of action becomes clear. Right now, with all the parties involved, I think there's a lot of different opinions on what could be the best course of action. And until we get those numbers and until we get those studies in place, it's kind of an uneducated or a baseless opinion at this point in time. So we want to try to get as much information as we can so that we can make the best informed decision possible before we go to the voters.
Right. I, yeah, I'll just summarize the way I see the political landscape. We, up until now, Troutdale, Wood Village, and Fairview were considering, seriously considering contracting for fire services with Clackamas Fire District 1. We have, and I've discussed this with the other cities, with Fairview and Wood Village's mayors, and, and Mike joined me, we, we had a meeting with Jeffrey, too, with their managers, and decided that Gresham is starting to, well, more than starting, they have addressed the idea, they are seriously considering the idea of joining or forming a fire district, which is what I think many of us see as the ultimate future provider of fire and emergency services in our area. And with Gresham, we would be, it would be a much better system than without Gresham. And Gresham responded by requesting that, proposing this five-year extension. That's our resolution that we're looking at tonight. A five-year extension of our contract for fire and emergency services with Gresham. So Troutdale has before us this resolution to extend our contract with Gresham on more or less the same basis that we've been contracting with them for now, for 30 years, frankly. And, but it didn't look like Gresham was interested in continuing that relationship until maybe six months ago. And now Gresham is seriously working with the other cities, and so both Wood Village and Fairview intend to adopt this resolution, the IGA extension, which is going to be before us, is our next item. And Troutdale, and I think Wood Village is considering it tonight. I'm assured that they're going to be in favor. And I was also assured Fairview would favor it, and I recommend that Troutdale favor it. It gives us time to further consider this very complex fire funding situation. And this, this deal that is, was offered by Gresham, we had some negotiations, but it's essentially this continuation of what we've been doing with Gresham for many years. And it, it has a one-year, 12-month opt-out provision if we should decide if we, and hopefully, it would be a mutual decision, that the four cities would decide to either join a fire district, an existing one, form a new one. The options are numerous, and that's the, the financial study Mike referred to is to try to assess what is the most cost-effective way for all of our cities to provide fire and emergency services. Anyway, the way I see it, this is a good thing. And it's good that Gresham is, is basically partnering with the other three cities. And so let, I, I encourage the council to adopt this, approve signing this IGA. Jeffrey or Carol, do you have further comments?
Yeah, I would just say that this was a, a good move forward. Gresham is seemingly willing to be at the table with us. They're very cordial. We all came to the same conclusions at the meeting, that we need to look at this study and get, be more educated on the subject. And, you know, until we can kind of move, decide what we're going to do to move forward, like, we need to have that data and in front of us so we can make what would be, or suggest what would be the, the best decision on how to move forward. And I want to say that we, on the Public Safety Working Group, are very aware of the idea that if this, if we don't pacify our district, or if there's delays in that, what our budget looks like, and trying to keep in mind of coming up with some Plan Bs of how we can address the needs of the community in the city specifically. And so those things are being, will be looked at and kind of plan, at least have a plan of action of what to do.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? I will invite public comment before we vote, but anything else from the council? Yes, Glenn?
Yeah. Since Tanny's in the audience, I wanted to thank him as Chair of our Budget Committee. He was the one that suggested getting the Public Safety Service Delivery Working Group enacted. And I think that was a really good move, considering, you know, the rollercocks arrived we've been on with the subject. And, you know, it's, it's gonna be over five years, 2.8 million dollar increase. And then if you add in, if we continue the $15 fee on the utility bill, over five years, that'll bring in $7 million. So it's 9.8 million dollar increase over five years. So I'm wondering if there's a chance that we could drop that $15 fee, given that's kind of a startling number over, over five years. Maybe we should look at it in budget.
If I could, Counselor, the one thing I would say about that is that each year, the fire district cost is going up. And right now, that public safety fee is flat. So the public safety fee was adopted in order to cover the shortfall. And so if the fire district cost is going up again, we're going to be shorter next year, and the year after, and the year after.
The math I did was 2.8 million over five years, but I know the service fee is, brings in 1.4 million a year.
Right.
So like, in two years, you would have, you would have the cost of this contract covered.
Year one, yes, but then next year, it's going to be an additional, and then the year after that, an additional.
Yeah, I did the, the amounts, five years, 2.8 million.
So, so if-
Increase.
So if the cost for services now were short, the cost for services now is 3.25 million, and we're basically short 1.4 million in being able to cover that. So we adopted a public safety fee to fill that gap. And next year, it's going to be 3.4, 3.5 million. Now, we're going to be an additional $250,000 short next year. And the year after that, an additional $500,000 to $600,000 short. And it's just going to keep going up because the escalator on the contract is 7.3%. Our tax base only increases an estimated 3%. So it's 4%, 4.3% more every year that we're not going to have, essentially.
Nothing in this resolution that we're looking at tonight brings in more money. I just realized that. So, I mean, the fee, nobody liked it. We all voted for it. There were, two nays wanted it to be higher than what we ended up adopting, but we all voted for the fee.
I was almost afraid to bring it up.
Well, because, because it's, we, because we're up against the wall, and there's no, nothing in this resolution is a reason to not, to repeal the fee. There is nothing, because there's no new revenue coming in. I wish it did, but it doesn't.
Mayor, if I could, if, if we get to a point where there's a fire district, then yes, get rid of that.
That would be a reason to, to drop the fee, because that would be a new source of revenue.
I'm in favor of the fee.
All right. Anyone else? I'll, I'll, I'll invite, before we vote, and what we'll be voting on is the resolution approving the IGA, continuing our, our fire and emergency services in the city of Gresham. Eric?
I, I just was going to, for the record, before you consider the resolution, just to reiterate, this is just to extend the existing IGA, which was extended six months ago for one year. Fire Services IGA expires June of next year. Poem on the first page of my staff report, I indicate that this extension would take it to June 30th of 2030, actually, to June 30th, 2031. It's not five years from now, but five years from next June, so in any case, not to be misleading there. Thankfully, it's just my staff report, not the resolution or the IGA, as has already been well briefed by, by folks, the background and so forth. This simply provides more maneuvering room, time for research, time for the four cities to evaluate options. It's a short, medium-term solution with off-ramps. As was mentioned, there was some, some negotiation. The initial proposal from Gresham was for 10% annual increases. It's come, the resolution and the IGA provides for a fixed 7.3% annually, still substantially above our tax, property tax revenue increases annually, but certainly better than the 10% that was originally proposed. And so I'm bringing this item forward tonight just because it's financial related, IGAs, I'm typically involved in just getting the paperwork done. But you folks are already well-versed and informed on the background of all of this, much better than I can provide to you. So that's all I had to provide for the record, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Eric. So we're going to be considering this, the resolution approving the IGA. Let me first see if there's any public comment in our Zoom participants. Does anybody wish to make public comment on this item?
Mayor Ripma, Paul, Alcock, Stroudell.
Yes, Paul.
Okay. Before I start on my, a couple more clerical comments than anything on the staff report, I want to follow up on that, what Counselor White was saying. The Public Safety Utility Fee, a good portion of that is going to MCSO. It's not all fire. So that 1.4 million in the first year, probably a million of that is going to MCSO. So I think that might be an area of confusion for Counselor White. On the staff report itself, the top of the page, under Committee Commission Recommendation, it states Public Safety Services Delivery Working Group recommends approval. I think I've watched every singular, single one of their meetings, and I've never seen them actually formally endorse or approve. So that's, that might be a fine point. But I had another correction that might be more, more critical, actually. It's under page three, or no, page two of the actual resolution. Give you a second to catch up with me. Page two of the resolution, section three, under the, now therefore be resolved, the fourth line reads, empowered and directed to sign the First Amendment to the IGA. I think that should read the Second Amendment. That, that was my main point on the resolution language. Thank you.
Yes, that looks right. It would be the Second Amendment. Thank you, Paul. All right. Anyone else on Zoom? Who wants to address the council about, here in the council chambers? Anyone care to address the council on this matter? All right. You agree with Paul's territorial-
Tommy wrote back.
So it is the Second Amendment. It is the Second Amendment.
I updated the resolution I used for the First Amendment adoption and missed- I updated the resolution I used for the First Amendment adoption and missed making that correction.
Okay, all right. Very good, but with that change, I wonder, any, if, for the discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a five-year extension of the Fire and Emergency Medical Services Intergovernmental Agreement with the city of Gresham.
All right. And that bleeds color.
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Ripma?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Davidson?
Yes.
Counselor Lanning?
Yes.
Counselor Andrews?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
All right.
Did I have someone that you, or maybe that seconded?
All right. We'll move on to item number nine, Staff Communications.
I just have a couple little things I just want to brief the council on, just brief and kind of bring you up to speed. We received a litigation claim on Midvale Road over the weekend, late Sunday, early Monday. I'll have to brief you all on that independently or under executive section. City Hall building over, the old City Hall building is trickling along. They have submitted their revised building permits. We see them working in there, but it's not quite as quick as the old Taste of Village is going, which is cruising along daily. They're making incredible process and incredible progress, sorry. And it's really coming along quickly and looking good. The Confluence, now we've had two meetings with the folks from the Confluence, and a third one, hopefully on the horizon. They're reworking some pro formas items and, and supposed to be coming back to us. We did the bid opening on the Sandy Office and Expansion north of 84, over in the industrial complex area. The bids came in just below, most of them came in below our engineering estimates, which bodes well for our ability to get the project done on budget and in time. On time and on budget, hopefully.
Can I say something?
Sure.
You had 15 bids. Probably not over like five bids to do that job.
It looks like our lowest bidder is probably, didn't quite get everything right, so. But the next one is still within our engineers' estimates, so we're still within budget. So it's looking pretty good. 921 Buxton, we've been underway with FFA to do kind of like the sizing block elements. We're expecting them to get with us here in the near future to kind of figure out what all of our staff needs are going to be in that building and how we can lay out the space to service that. It's obviously going to need some new electrical siding, some data, like data windows. There's a number of things that we're going to have to do, but we're going to start working on that process, and we'll bring it up as we start progressing. And the last thing I want to just update everyone on, and the gentleman in the back here had mentioned it. The Sandy River Delta and Thousand Acres cleanup is underway, and a lot of those folks are displaced and making their way to and through town. And we had a meeting this morning with the Monoma County Sheriff's Office and the Hope Team. That's the, the group that goes around and talks to these folks and tries to get them services or serve them notices when they're illegally camping or occupying rideways illegally. So we are trying to work with that. It is a little bit of a whack-a-mole game, but we are trying to get these folks into proper services so they can seek medical attention, so they can have a roof over their head, get out of the weather, and, and get in a safe environment. But we are dealing with more events, more encounters on our streets because they have been essentially roused out of Thousand Acres. So that's kind of the update, but most of Thousand Acres is empty. We have seen a couple of sites pop up on Sundial Island, and on the Forest Service, and on ODOT land. But they're still working out there, and there's going to be a presence at least through the next, or through the biennium. So for the next year or so to 2027 at least, so. Good news, bad news, unfortunate side effects. But we are trying to take it one at a time and make sure that we're reducing the impacts as much as possible. That's all I had, really.
All right. Move on to Council Concerns. Council Communications, Jeffrey?
I don't have much. I would just say to the gentleman in the back, keep voicing your concerns. I think the City Council has an email, email the whole entire City Council. If you're concerned, feel free to keep emailing. There's a few other gentlemen, families that email periodically, but keep, keep letting us know, and we can kind of keep that information out and trying to keep this problem under wraps. So that's what I would say for that. And this is our last meeting before Thanksgiving. I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving and enjoys holidays with their family.
All right, yes. I also share the concern of, Mr. Cleaves, I believe it was, Tracy Cleaves. I mean, it, this, well, we talked yesterday. It sounds like this is even more recent update, but we've got to get together with the sheriff and do something about this. I mean, really. Get them someplace where they can get help, but we can't have them sleeping in doorways or running boom boxes in the middle of downtown, shooting obscenities. I mean, this is completely unacceptable. The, as, as, I also hear Counselor One's wish to, that everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving, which is, I guess it's coming up next week, good grief. But there is an event coming that we do annually. The Troutdale Historical Society has Santa coming to the barn exhibit hall at Harlow House Barn, the Big Red Barn, on Saturday, December 6th. Santa's there from noon to 3:00. It's always a festive event and entertains lots and lots of kids, and the rest of us too. So that's December 6th, Saturday, noon to 3:00. And that's all I have.
Well, I just want to thank the members of the Public Safety Service Delivery Working Group. I know that was a lot of meetings and a lot of hard work, and I, we came up with a pretty good outcome. I know it's an increase, but, you know, it's surprisingly how well it transformed from where it was. So I appreciate the effort that everyone put into that. And, yeah, I noticed, I've been noticing the homeless as well. And I do know the security guys show up late at night and they do a sweep of Glen Auto Park. I don't know if you're aware of that, so. I can see them from where I live, and they do, they're doing a good, they're doing a good job. They actually walk through there with flashlights and stuff, so. That's some help, but it's, it's not enough. So we'll, we'll continue. I think our ordinance covers a lot of these locations where I've seen them because it's by Mayor's Square, which is a park. So they're on the river, where they have to be 250 feet from, from the river, and they still aren't legal. But I understand it's a transition with the cleanup. I was curious, is the public allowed in Thousand Acres right now?
I think it's closed right now, or I think they have it closed for about two months at least, while they're cleaning up. So Rapid has been out there cleaning daily. You'll see their trucks going in and out. You'll see them pulling the big dumpsters out. It's remarkably, it looks remarkably cleaner now than what it did even a month ago. And you can walk around the trails and you're all walking around garbage and filth and trash stacked up all around you. So they've really done a great job, made it up. And it should be kind of reopened here in the very near future to foot traffic and the like. But there will be security patrols in and around, I mean, as they show up.
Happy Thanksgiving, as Jeffrey said, that's all I have.
Yep, just happy Thanksgiving. Say the same thing, happy Thanksgiving. I think the homeless issue's been addressed, so.
Zach?
Yeah, thanks. I was happy to see that we changed some of the wording in the, I guess, redline copy of the IGA to include some options for kind of like, I guess, an exit clause, so to speak, more than we had before. And, yeah, I'm just really pleased with the work that you guys have done. So I appreciate everyone's efforts on that part. Was wondering if there's, aside from just some of the local stuff, like through Snowcap, if there's any kind of city food drive or anything like that going on that we should know about when it comes to Thanksgiving coming up around the corner here? If we have any like canned goods or anything like that to give? Just want to, want to know if there's any, any information on that or where people can go to find it if they are curious?
It's at City Hall, Counselor Andrews. We have a, we have a big bucket at City Hall to do the food drive.
Perfect.
Wrapping paper.
Nice. There we go, that's awesome. Yeah, well, definitely, I appreciate you guys down there. Thanks for putting that together, and, yeah, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Eric, did you have something to add?
When Counselor was, when Counsel's done, I had one final item.
Oh, okay. Carol?
Nope, just happy Thanksgiving and a great time with friends and family.
Well, just before adjournment, I wanted to mention, have a happy Thanksgiving. But two weeks from tonight, we will expect you back for the mid-year Budget Committee meeting.
Boy. Didn't miss out on that.
So isn't there a, there's a street fair or country fair coming up as well? There's a Windy Wonderland, but I thought there was another little event where they do like the farmer's market or something, coming up like in the next week or two?
Well, there's a farmer's market that, at the College, is now down at the Outlet Mall.
Is that what it is?
Saturday and Sunday.
The Source Society does a meet Santa for the kids and homemade cookies and...
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't forgetting something. I thought I, there was like another one happening, but that's probably it.
All right.
I move we adjourn.
Well, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.